Okay, buddy. Um. Roll call. I call the meeting order and.
Mrs. Belisca.
Present.
Mr. DeSarno. Mr. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mayor Morgan.
Here.
Mrs. Joffrey.
Thank you.
Mr. Cogan.
Here.
Mrs. McKnight.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
It's a public meeting of the Borough Council of New Providence, coming to Union State and Jersey. And notice has been given in accordance with P O nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. And then annual notice of revision was made in performance of section thirteen of the Act. Before we start, um, I'd like to make a, have a moment of silence for Gloria Batsley, who passed away. Um, because it was last week. She was on the board of education for many, many years and was board president. And she did a lot for this community over the years, so we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Before we do one thing else, I also want to say a shout out to the girls' basketball group two state champions. They were bridesmaids for a few years and you know what? They came up big this year and we congratulate them and they always make us proud. Okay, uh, I have a public hearing on ordinance oh one. Uh, let me please your title.
In ordinance of the Borough of New Providence to revise ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen regarding lead paint testing.
I think that's pretty self-explanatory. This is a, this is an ordinance about uh lead paint testing and it's mandated by the state. So I kind of motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Anybody wishing to address counsel on this ordinance, this ordinance only, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Belisca.
Aye.
Mr. DeSarno.
Aye.
Mr. Kaminsky.
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Cogan.
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight.
Yes.
Okay. We've got through all these names and every, all the liaisons went through all the names.
Aye.
Okay. Looked through appointments specification, Neil Cronin, Perry Everton, Kara Alkov, Adrian Foote, Alexander Jacaloon, Nancy Valerio, Anna Weinstein. Diversity Committee, Samira Braun, Casey Arias, Lynn Seller, Giannina, Renato, Ivi, Renato, Sorica Devatte, Kara Ferkov, Alberta, Jose Alberto, Lopez Garcia, Rupacal, Lorena Kerr, Elena Cousin, Laura Morano, Christine Morgan, Vakashmar Sharma, Manta Shangal, Cindy Warren, Warren May, Anna Weinstein, Jane Zoo, and Chanda Jansen. Mental health advocacy. Donna, who's, how do you say it? Who does it?
Buskill.
Buskill. Buskill. Thank you. Lisa Fama, Deborah Carrick, Colleen La, Candy McAlum, Merrick, Do Novak, and four students, Alyssa Zar, Zara Khan, Alyssa Merrick, and Nikhil Shrestas Abba. Sustainability, Montana Chio, Mary Cool, Chi Carson, Adrian Foote, Stuki Grover, John Keen, Rick Keller, Jimin Lu, Paula McGraw, Kathleen Dolan Palace, Humbert Howell, Doug Smith, Joe Testet, Anna Weinstein, Donna Zane, and two students, Aiden Horst and Valmik Mahata. Can I have a, uh, approval for all that? Make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
No, so be it. Okay. Let's go to approval of minutes to February fourteenth, please. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, so be it. Okay, we have two correspondents from Comcast and annual notice regarding their, their payment. Uh, you can just pull right away. And the Providence Business Professional Association, your Borough Policy Event. Okay, any comments?
I actually, the, I, I read the letter from the Borough, the Business Professional Association. I think it's a great idea. Uh, you know, they're trying to encourage people, uh, to, that's hosting events, you know, in the borough to utilize borough, uh, resources, right? If you're gonna, if you need food, utilize one of the local restaurants, you know? If you need supplies, use the local supply store. So I think it's a, it's an excellent idea.
Okay. Let's go to council business. Uh, seventy-seven, uh, that would be Matt.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven-seven is a resolution approving request of the New Providence Business Community to sponsor a community event during the calendar year twenty twenty-three. This resolution seeks approval for the annual events by the business community. That includes the summer concert series that runs throughout July, uh, National Night Out. Uh, in August, our scarecrow stroll content and contest, our downtown trick or treat and our street fair in October, as well as our holiday festival in November. What it doesn't include is fireworks, um, for our Independence Day celebration on July third. Uh, business, uh, community decided not to sponsor that specific event. However, I did speak to, uh, Bernadette and our finance team and the borough is in position and will be sponsoring the July third event, um, which is, uh, one of my favorites, uh, traditions that we have here in New Providence. Really happy that we can, uh, continue our action and, uh, so more, more information on that. And I do want to just say thank you to the business community, uh, for, for sponsoring all these, uh, events throughout the year. These are, uh, great traditions and great events that are enjoyed by all.
Okay, engineering.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, engineering and construction, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seventy-eight. Uh, this is a resolution approving partial payment number three for the Franklin Floors Incorporated in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents for the second floor bathroom renovation. This is the third payment, uh, on the second floor bathroom project, which is about to be finished. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven-nine, resolution approving contract to Air Pro Systems Corp., uh, four eleven Hope Avenue, Roswell, New Jersey, in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars for the library HVAC, uh, uh, installation. It's the purchase and installation of a new HVAC unit for the library.
Thank you. Uh, finance, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty is a resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriations. Uh, specifically, we're looking for temporary appropriations for maintenance contracts, technology maintenance, recycling contract, garbage, grass brush pickup, automotive parts and supplies, gasoline, utilities, and solid waste disposal for the temporary budget. Uh, resolution twenty-three dash eighty-one is a transfer resolution appropriation reserve. And this is a resolution transferring money into the insurance trust fund and the snow removal storm recovery trust fund. And then lastly, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-two is a resolution authorizing payment of the attached bills payable list in the amount of three million eight hundred and seventy-two thousand forty-one dollars and nine cents. Uh, the two significant items on this list are three million four hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars to the County of Union for the first quarter county purpose tax. And then a hun- another hundred and nineteen thousand thirteen dollars to the County of Union for the first quarter twenty twenty-three county open space tax.
So, so you're the reason? We snow today?
Yeah.
You have to move money into the account?
Uh, it's snow today.
And it was heavy. Okay. We have, uh, two limousine license requests for Summit Express for Alex Chitatsk, Chitak Katski, and Ibrahim Ibraginov. They've been properly reviewed and, uh, prepared. Uh, resolution oh eight-three is a, uh, resolution authorizing the disposition, the public sale of, uh, property. Um, the fire, the, uh, police department constantly is finding bicycles with no owners. And what we do is we put them out for election. Um, they do that every six months or so, so. Uh, it's amazing how people, I guess people pick up bikes, ride them, and they just leave them. I don't understand.
And no, so those are in the lost and found, like if?
Yeah.
People don't check.
Yeah. Okay, resolution oh eighty-four is a resolution, uh, approving the withdrawal from the Mountain Valley Emergency Communication Center or Summit in Melbourne and entering an agreement with Union County to service the borough's nine-one-one public service answering point for dispatching in borough emergency services, which include police, fire, and EMS. Although Mountain Valley has been the borough's provider for emergency dispatches since two thousand fourteen, the cost of the service has become prohibitive. The transition to the county dispatch offers the borough access to the state-of-the-art technology and services while providing the borough with significant cost savings. Okay, we go to public works and.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alex.
Uh, the first item is a request, uh, to advertise for seasonal summer help. This is for three summer help positions in the public horse department, about forty hours a week, ranging fifty to twenty dollars per hour, depending on experience. And applicants must have a valid driver's license and be over the eighteen years of age. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-five, this resolution approving requisition number R twenty-three zero zero four one six for Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company in the amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars Bergen County Co-op Contract Number twenty-one dash thirteen for wastewater treatment pump installation. Uh, this is a resolution approving, uh, Rapid, uh, Pump and Meter to install gorator pump number two along with various piping valves and wastewater treatment plant. This, this particular pump was ordered last year with, uh, all the delays in, um, delivery and manufacturing. Uh, it's, it's fine here, so this is to actually install it, move some things around and, and add some better valve configurations. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-six, uh, resolutions supporting applications submission to the Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Program for twenty twenty-three. Uh, submission of Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant for milling and paving, uh, upper roads. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-seven, resolution approving, uh, requisition number R twenty-three zero zero four two six for G P Jaeger, Inc. in not to exceed twenty-eight thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars for wastewater treatment plant installation. Uh, P V S C North Jersey Co-op Contract B twenty-seven zero dash six. Uh, this is also, uh, a resolution approving a purchase of a channel monster for the wastewater treatment plant. I'll get through this. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-eight, resolution accepting the proposal of Collier Engineering Design, uh, in design formerly, uh, D B A Mazer Consulting for professional construction administrative services regarding Central Avenue and Valentine Road to include the construction of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon system for pedestrians crossing Central Avenue.
Okay, sustainability, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
So resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight-nine is a resolution approving the request of the New Providence Sustain- Sustainability Advisory Committee just for community events during the calendar year of twenty twenty-three. And these are specifically, um, the, and New Providence Green Awards, the New Providence Green Fair, N P Recycle Fest, and the ongoing Sustainable New Jersey Application. Um, Green Fair is back after, um, we didn't have it last year, we had the year before, and that's April twenty-second. Um, and then Free Cycle will be in September. Um, and Green Awards is, uh, all the flyers will be coming out. It's to nominate, um, businesses and individuals for their work being green and, um, helping the environment. These are great, great events, and there will be more to come next week, but look for information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion items?
Yeah, I have a couple. Um, I know today we made some committee appointments. Wendy, do we, I had mentioned to Bernadette, we had talked about having training for some of the, the resident leads on the committees. Has that training happened yet or, or is it gonna be scheduled?
I believe she said.
Okay, no, I think, I think that's a great, a great thing that we're, we're gonna be doing. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about downtown. I know a couple of months ago, we had, as you know, um, come in front of this, this, uh, council, um, uh, a, a motion to go ahead and increase our downtown, um, structures to three stories, commercial residential mixed use. Um, you heard me speak at that time passionately against it. Um, on the basis of the fact that I think we have a very special downtown, unique, quaint, and some concerns that it would impact our traffic and parking. Um, some things I want to bring up tonight, obviously not related to that because we were moving on from that, but some things that I, I, I brought up and other things and kind of all go into a downtown conversation. I think it's important we have. Um, first is regard to traffic safety. Um, Chief Hen had a meeting, I guess a month or two ago, did a wonderful job after all those, uh, townwide, I think we've divided into quadrants, right? Uh, the town and took feedback from the residents as far as how we can improve traffic safety, pedestrian safety. And he had a great meeting where he went over all the improvements as well as took some new suggestions or some new, uh, concerns that residents had. Uh, I attended that meeting and I expressed some concerns from a downtown perspective. Namely, and I'm sure if you've traveled in our downtown, you've seen it as well, um, mid-block crossings being a real problem. Um, we have parking on the street and that was done to a number of years back before I was on council. And it's actually a traffic calming measure to have on-street parking. But what it does is if someone's crossing mid-block, you're darting literally between cars. And I, I find that very, uh, concerning, um, as opposed to someone going down to a, a crosswalk. Uh, there's a number of places where you could see it occur, uh, you know, uh, across from the diner, across from bars, across from Starbucks. You see it all the time. Um, I'm concerned about, you know, some remisses there and, and things that I've, I've witnessed. The other thing, of course, is just the traffic flow, obviously. It's, it's getting harder and harder, as we all know, and left out of the shopping plaza, making a, a left out of Starbucks is, i- is difficult. What I, what I asked during that meeting was, uh, a revisiting. And a number of years ago, I, I believe, Mayor, we had someone look at the, um, you know, possibly an additional traffic light. Listen, I, I acknowledge that I'm not a traffic expert and I'm not gonna pretend to be one. But I think it, I think it's very important that we are proactive, knowing all of the building that's coming our way in our town and surrounding towns, that we get ahead of it. So I, I, I would again, uh, make the request and obviously some of the county roads, we need to work with the county, but to have, to be proactive and to have, um, you know, these things looked at and, and see if there's possible additional traffic calming measures, not only to improve traffic flow, but also pedestrian safety. So I would again just bring this up and hopefully we can have a, a more robust conversation on this topic, again, of downtown. The other thing linked to the downtown, which I'd like to bring up, and, uh, I guess you could say I'm, I'm advocating strongly for our beloved downtown this evening, um, is, you know, we, I think we all believe that we have something really special in our downtown. It's unlike any, in my opinion. You know, we're not as big as a Summit or Westfield and we don't want to be. You know, we, we have a very quaint, charming downtown. I hear many new arrivals in town, people who've moved here say that they love that feature and we want to preserve it. Um, I think it was about three or four years ago when I first got on council before COVID started, I had expressed, I had stated that I saw some things with regard to signage and enforcement of signage rules that I think we're kind of slipping. And, you know, sometimes you get slippage and it keeps going and going and going and you wind up in a spot that you don't necessarily want to be. Now, I want to make sure it's clear that I'm bringing up this conversation. I think we should have a more robust one, not necessarily tonight, but maybe in the future, that I'm bringing this up with my love and affection for our downtown and our businesses. You know, this is not, uh, this is, this is done in that, in that vein because I want to keep what we have as very special. Um, from a signage perspective, things that I've noticed, you know, whether it's A-frame signs on the sidewalk that cluttered a sidewalk, cluttered windows, uh, neon signs, a proliferation of, of banners and, 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 like I said, other signs. Have you even noticed electronic signs, signs now being put on the side of, of, of one building or one structure? So, you know, I, I, I think this is again in the spirit of maintaining quaintness, in the spirit of maintaining our, our downtown as being something very unique and very special. Um, whether it's the traffic safety or the signage aspect, uh, I'm not sure where we go from here, but I, I would like to have maybe a, a more robust conversation, what do you think about, about that? Um, so, thank you.
Well, Pete, I think you had a conversation here with Chief Hen. The last council meeting, he explained to you pretty much in detail about mid, mid-block crossings. They do not do them. It's a, it's a.
Oh, the, the, Mayor, misinterpreting what I'm saying. I'm not suggesting we start mid-block crossings. I'm suggesting that we encourage our residents to cross across walks and see what other measures we could take so they don't incur. I am not saying that we should have mid-block crossings, just to make that clear, thank you.
And, uh, with regards to traffic light, a warrant study was sent to the county. It usually takes years to get a traffic light and that's if it's even approved. So it's not like we dropped the ball on it.
No, no, no.
We have, we, I ask all the time, but where do we stand with that traffic light? What Mr. DeSarno was talking about, we were talking about a traffic light at Gales and South that would tie with, with the one at Springfield and the Safe Street, okay? And that way it would give people, uh, a timeframe with no traffic either way that they could pull out of the shopping center safe. Also, I think a light would be advantageous there because you have a, a crosswalk there. You know, so we have looked at it, we've sent the warrant study to the county and we're ready for their determination. Uh, I have to tell you that the, the light at Maple Street and, uh, Central cost the borough, because the two borough streets, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These lights are not cheap. So, you know, the county has budgets too, so, um, they have to look at everything that they're doing. As far as people cross in the middle of the block, that's more education than anything.
They sure.
And I know when I grew up, that you were told to look left, right, left, nothing coming across. State laws changed since then. You step off that curb, the car is supposed to stop. So, you know, that's an education thing that I, I think they, they made a big mistake when they, when they made that law. But, you know, we can't change state statute. So, but your point is well taken. But, um, I know, I see it, we all do. And I was guilty of delivering packages down South Street myself. I mean, I looked to make sure it's clear, you know? I wasn't walking down to the light and going across all the way back up to deliver packages. So, um, no, but your point is well taken.
Thank you.
I, if I just add, just to comment on what Mr., uh, Councilman DeSarno said, I, I agree with him a hundred percent. Chief Hen and Sergeant Diamond or Officer Diamond did a wonderful presentation. Uh, but just to highlight on what, uh, Pete said regarding, um, the signage, I, I happened to be in the parking lot this weekend, uh, by C V S and noticed that big, big digital s- sign. I mean, I, I couldn't believe that it, it's just advertising for, I think, other businesses, public service announcements, but it, it's a pretty large display board.
Yeah, I, I remember it was a problem and Matt brought it up at the, uh, input meeting. Keith already has, uh, given out, what did he say, sixty-two, uh, violation summons? And, um, he, he's pretty overworked. You know, his job isn't only being the zoning, uh, officer, but, uh, he was made aware that, uh, we want to start enforcement a little stronger.
Yeah, that, that sign was just overwhelming, it shocked it with, it's the size of a door.
You know, it's like anything else, you give an inch, they take a mile, you know, so. It does, it gets out of hand. So, okay, any other discussion items? Seeing none, we'll go to, uh, committee reports. Actually, uh, operations normal with that. Um, Diane.
I've got about seventy-five minutes of, no. Um, so, uh, the website is in the process of, uh, meeting all of their deadlines and their timetables, so we're looking forward to hopefully, um, the end of May. Um, so operations normal with that. Um, members of our Sustainability Committee are here, Kathleen and Doug, and they can answer any questions that we have on our, um, wonderful events coming up. But other than that, I think, oh, um, Historical Society is also working on their, uh, their, uh, calendar for the year. They have a lot of great things coming up too, so look at their website. Other than that, does anybody have any questions?
Pete?
Um, the only thing I have is I, I, um, attended the Board of Ed meeting last week. I had to leave early, so I don't have a full report. It was covered, of course, in the tab, but, um, it's always a, an impressive, uh, an impressive thing to attend our, our Board of Ed meetings. You know, we, we're very fortunate in town to have the, the people, both from a, uh, administration side, teacher side, parents, uh, participation and, um, staff and, and it just, just, just very impressive start to finish. While I was there, they covered the audit report. If I remember correctly, they, they didn't have any finding, the auditors were quite complimentary. Uh, they also talked a little bit, or a great extent, I should say, about the curriculum instruction report. Um, really, I, I, I made about half the presentation, very, very dynamic. They had, uh, uh, children presenting as well, different things, and it was, it was really, uh, it was interesting. So, um, just a very, from my perspective, for the portion I was there, a very positive event.
Good. Matt?
So, Planning Board started hearing the, uh, testimony on forty-four South Street. That's the, um, old florist. So, we heard the, we heard the planner, uh, discuss the plan so far. Uh, probably at least one, maybe two more meetings, I would think. Uh, architecture and, and some, uh, uh, traffic study discussions that we had. But, uh, I just wanted to say that we had a few public, um, residents come to the meeting, uh, very, very well-prepared. Um, one resident probably asked questions for over thirty minutes. Um, really great questions, very detailed. He, you know, and I, and I went up to him after the meeting and I thanked him for, for, for coming to me. And, and I've been saying this for a long time, that's so important, right? Our zoning meetings, our planning board meetings, you know, our council meetings, you know, it, it, without public input, right? When public comes and they ask questions and they have input, good things come out of it. Um, lots of questions that that particular resident asked, um, you know, I said to them, there, there were three or four of those questions I had that I didn't ask because I just either didn't get to them, some change in the subject matter or whatever. So that's, that's what this is, this community is all about. And I thought it was, uh, it was a great meeting and I, and I really appreciated that, uh, that they were there to, to ask those questions. And I encourage, uh, you know, residents to continue to come to all those meetings and, and continue to ask good questions, so.
Thank you. They do.
Operations normal.
Alex?
Nothing to report.
Lisa?
Uh, finality continues to meet. We're fine tuning the budget and, uh, we will get that out and present it to residents shortly, so stay tuned on that one.
Uh, fining committee continues to meet. We're fine tuning the budget and, uh, we will get that out and present it to residents shortly. So stay tuned on that one. Um, beautification advisory committee will be meeting tomorrow. So hopefully we come up with a, uh, a nice, some nice ideas of how to, you know, beautify the town. I have ideas in mind, but, uh, we'll see what, what happens there. And the library board did meet last week and I have to say that we have such a vibrant, um, busy library. It's, it's really an amazing thing to see. Uh, the friends of the library are awesome. They, they work tirelessly, like they're all coming up with, you know, different events and ideas. Um, so I really want to thank the friends of the library, they do an amazing job. Uh, right now, there's two art displays that are going to be in the library to the end of March. Uh, Mr. Vivona, if you might recognize his name, he was an art teacher at the high school. Uh, he is an amazing artist, so go check out his work at the library. And then Mr. Francisco Silva also has his artwork there. Uh, we've got a couple concerts coming up, uh, in March and April. Uh, the craft fair in, on April 7th. The, the friends of the library are planning a murder mystery, you know, at the library, so that's going to be fun. And I have to say that they are also working with the rec department here in town to kind of, you know, uh, collaborate with some of these events, so which is nice to see. So it's really a collaborative effort. Um, you know, if you haven't been to the library lately, go check it out.
You know, I think it's important to, uh, point out, every week, every Tuesday, uh, Bernadette Schedules, a department head meeting, and all the departments on, including the library, and they all talk about what's coming up, what events, what they have planned, what kind of goals. And in New Providence, we work like a family. So if there's, if somebody needs, uh, the police or the fire department or EMS or, or the building department or, or recreation, or the library needs something, they all work together to make it a, the, the best possible place it, it can be. And, you know, I know not many towns do that, but we do. And, you know, the people that work here in the borough, they're like a family and they treat each other with respect and they are like a family. So I, I just want to bring that up because what you're saying with the recreation, the life, I mean, that goes on all the time. And we, you know, we never even have bring it up because it comes second nature, you know? So, okay, at this time, Bernadette, you have anything? Okay, this time we have public comments. Anybody wishing to address council, raise your hand in the name of the address? Yes, I will.
Hi. Uh, I wanted to say, I wasn't attending, talking about this, but since, uh, Councilman DeSarno brought it up, I, I think you need to be open-minded about how to deal with, um, mid-block crossings. Because I, I don't, I, I'm not sure I see a way that it's going to stop. I mean, your own admission. I mean, for example, I think once, once the, um, the property, the old Bank of America property gets occupied and that parking lot gets busy and Prestige, I know, has a, basically a verbal agreement with the Presbyterian Church of using it. People are going to be crossing mid-block. I mean, they have, it is out there that you can use that parking lot. So I just, I'm just thinking, I just, I'm just saying, rather than dismissing it, it is an issue.
It's, it's not that we're dismissing it. It's county roads, we have nothing to do with them. And we can go to the county, but we have gone. They do not want mid-block crossings.
Yeah, I, 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 let me just redirect the conversation a little bit. The, what I brought up tonight was an issue with mid-block crossings. I was not promote, I was not at all saying the solution is a mid-block crossing. The solution is crossing at the light. The solution may be other traffic calming measures that people who are very well versed at this may recommend. What I, I know we have certain, we have approached the county in the past. There's the studies, there's a time, there's a timeline for things to get done. My point is that clearly our traffic flow, you brought, you mentioned additional tenants in downtown. We know the additional building that's going on around is going to increase. I'm a big proponent of being proactive rather than reactive, God forbid, after a problem. So what I'm suggesting tonight is that every, we, we continue to try to be as proactive as possible.
Very good. I guess that's, that's good. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what we've been doing, looking for lights and other things.
I just, I, you know, and, and if, if what's needed is to have citizens go on over to Elizabeth and go and talk to commissioners, I, you know, I, I, I think that, that can happen. I mean, if, if that's, if, if the stumbling block is the county, then.
I think Chief Hen said it right. These are state laws that they don't want to put mid-crossing block in. And, you know?
I haven't investigated it so that, uh, you know, to, to the point where I.
Okay, I'm, I'm not going to argue.
Suggestion, it's just.
I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't play, I'm to be, I listen to my professionals.
I, I, I think you're absolutely right, Mayor. The, the, the thing tonight was to just talk about the concern we have and then let's see it go somewhere as opposed, we're not going to solve anything. We're not experts on this.
You're correct. Um, I had one other thing. I, I was, I'm, I'm going to, um, on September 14th, 2021, you had a meeting where you were discussing the standard operating procedures. And, um, if I may, um, Mary Ann Ivors, uh, if I use her report, because the, her report was more complete than the minutes, um, of that meeting, that, uh, she basically mentioned that the council was urged to evaluate the role and purpose of some of advisory boards and committees. And, um, she noted, this, this was Bernadette. She noted that, uh, some boards and committees do not have a mission statement and said that some committees do not have, uh, do not have to exist in perpetuity. So sorry. When their purpose, uh, has been served, it is okay to end them. She advised the council to start evaluating committees and boards should be kept. I'm just, I'm just curious, I, I, I understand that it's, I imagine it's an ongoing process, looking at the, at the committees. But I'm just, um, I guess I'm asking where, where are you at with regard to that? Looking at those committees and are there any that have sort of changed their missions?
One, one of them, I know it changes the cable TV committee. Because the, uh, that was put in because, uh, we have a contract with, with Comcast and it's not up yet, so we didn't need to have that committee anymore until we reevaluate when that, uh, contract comes up.
To solve the committee.
I guess, I, I guess when you, when you look at the structure of committees, that, um, the ones that come to mind are the advisory committees, which are structured to advise on a particular issue and cease this. I mean, that's basically, that's what your policy is. So I'm just curious as to how, if that's been reviewed or if the mission has been reviewed because you do have advisory committees that have been around for some years.
Right, well, we have the diversity committee, which, we have the sustainability, the beautification. There, there's a few committees that, you know, you, you're just, you're just committees that we need. I don't know.
So probably, so like, what we're, what, one of the committees that we disbanded was the economic development because that went on for a couple of years, um, and to the point where, you know, it was brought around when there were some vacancies in town and some, you know, economic viability needed to be brought back to New Providence. But now that we have almost 100% occupancy, that committee got to the point where they were struggling to find a purpose or, or to find something to do. So that one was disbanded. But some of these, like the beautification, the diversity committee, uh, mental health, I mean, those are committees that, you know, you, you can't say like, oh, it served its purpose and now we're going to disband it because it's always going to have a purpose.
I guess the perfect one is the Tricentennial Committee. Yeah, right, Kathleen? I mean, because of COVID, it went, it, it.
But I think, Mr. Swanson, none of the major committees that you might be referring to are being disbanded. I think it's, it, it's only when they no longer have a business purpose for us or any. We don't need to seek any advisory, but for the vast majority of them, it's definitely a, a real necessity to have these advisory committees.
Well, I guess in the context of the, of the meeting from the September 14th, 2021, terms of looking at the missions, I'm, I'm just, I come to a lot of meetings, so I'm not sure I, I recall a meeting where there was a description of the, this or that committee's mission has been reviewed and is now this particular mission as opposed to a mission that, that's from 2018 or whatever. That's, that, that's, that's where I'm getting, I just, having come here, I've just never seen where the missions are reviewed.
We actually had a special meeting that was, yeah, at the, at the end of January last year. That was open to the public and all of the committees were discussed and mission statements and such.
Okay.
So we, we do review the committees every, at the end of.
I'm sorry.
We do review the committees at the end of every year. Uh, we, you know, we review what, what it needed, we review the mission statements, review the appointment like we did tonight, uh, the member appointments. So it is, it's not something that just gets shelved and not looked at.
The key word is ongoing, right? So then we do, you know, look at the calendar for each year to see what each committee is going to do. We discuss it, it comes in front of council, just like sustainability tonight. We discuss what their calendar is going to be, what they're going to work on this year. We'll be hearing from diversity committee probably the next meeting or the meeting after that. Um, mental health advocacy, we'll probably be hearing from them in the next meeting or two as well. So we're always, especially if the liaisons are actively working with all the committees um, to see what they're, you know, what they're working on, making sure it goes along with their mission and properly planned and organized. So ongoing is really the best way to describe it.
Thank you. One last thing. Um, on December 20th, um, I came in, I'm not going to talk about the issue tonight. One of the times that I talked about the American Rescue Plan funds and the, and, and public input into that process. Um, and during the meeting, Mayor Morgan, you referred twice to five-year plan. I, I've inquired of the administration of the five-year plan and they, they have been written in writing, said that such a plan exists. So I'm curious if we have a clarification.
We look at capital projects five years out, what we can afford, we put it in a priority of what we need. That's our five-year plan. It's not etched in stone, it's just a plan that we look at, the things that we need to get done in, in, in priority order. A lot has to do with the, uh, the sewer plant. You know, it's old. I think it was, what, totally redundant in 1980?
Thirty, thirty years ago.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things. You can see that, uh, Alex has brought up pumps, a channel monster, things like that. These are upgrades that we need to do to keep the plant operational. So that, that was in our five-year plan, that you have to take a look at all your equipment and what's needed and, uh, schedule it out.
Is there, is, is there a document or a five-year?
It's, it's included.
Say five-year plan.
It's in the.
I've requested the five-year plan and said it doesn't exist.
It's in the capital plan.
Is that a document that's?
And we, uh, once we, uh, we, uh.
Last year's is online.
It's introduced every budget.
Yes.
Last year's is online.
That's online?
It's at the end of the budget.
At the end of the budget, when we, we, when we, uh, pass the budget, it'll be in the capital plan.
Cap, budget section of the budget.
For what you're planning for the next five years will be. Okay. And then, and it, just.
But it can change. I mean, things.
That's where I was just about to hit.
They, they change it, that's why, you know?
When you say they, that's where I was heading. Where, who, when it says they can change it, who's they?
The council. I mean, an, an emergency may come up where we need a piece of equipment done at Public Works or this or that. And we had, it, it, the capital plan will have to change to accommodate our needs.
I'm just, I'm just going back again to the citizen participation aspect of things again. Where is there a process where citizens are informed?
It's during the pro, the budget process.
Okay. All right, so then.
Now, this year we're doing the budget because you, uh, I guess it was somebody else made a, a point. Why don't you make your presentation before you pass the budget? And I said, that's a good idea. So you'll have a month to look over it, we'll make the presentation. And then a month later, we could, uh, we could either during that time, we could amend it or, or pass the budget. So we're going to change that up a little.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else we should do it? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Jeff Knight, 21 Penwood Drive, president of the Rebels Lacrosse Club. Uh, I'm here to implore the town council to table moving forward with the cricket project, pitch project that was announced at the December meeting. I've been a resident of New Providence for 18 years and I've seen the field issues that have plagued this town. To be clear, I'm not against the use of a field in town for cricket, but to, to dedicate a field for singular purpose would be folly. If you're going to turf a field, then turf the entire field. To only turf a 10 by 75 foot section of the field takes away the opportunity for that field to be used across all sports. It also completely ignores all of the people in surrounding neighborhood that use and enjoy the field regularly. All fields in this town renovated over the past 10, uh, past decade plus should have been created for multi, multiple purposes. If you're dedicating Warner Field for a singular purpose, then, uh, you're repeating the mistake that is Upper Oakwood, which sits idle while teams, clubs and taxpayers are scrambling for usable field space with the frequency that fields are closed and issues that plague Hillview and Lincoln due to poor drainage making the fields often unplayable. Taking another field away would be irresponsible, irresponsible to the people of this town. I was told by a member of the council, uh, that the field would still be for multiple purposes, but the soccer goals, the lacrosse goals and baseball backstop have all already been removed. Also, if you, uh, talk to people from towns that are putting in these dedicated fields, uh, similar to what is planned, such as Persipney Troy Hills, you'll find that these fields cannot be used for in a multipurpose fashion. Milburn recently, uh, presented a similar proposal, but have the foresight to incorporate the cricket pitch into the soccer fields so that it can have multiple uses by its citizens. And that presentation can be found on the Milburn Tap. If the town council is inclined to pursue the project, I, as well as other members of the surrounding neighborhood and those that run the programs that use the fields, ask you to bring, uh, it to a town vote of whether this project is in the best interest of this towns, you know, of this town. And as was said, if you're going to use taxpayer dollars, uh, then do it right and turf the entire field so it can be used by all New Providence residents or don't turf it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you maybe respond to that?
Well, I'll just say this, you know, to turf that entire field would cost probably upwards of a million, maybe more. Would, and we wouldn't be able to light it because it's close to a neighborhood. So, um, you know, that would be out of question. It is going to be used for multi-sports because we're putting a turf, 10 by 75 piece of turf within the park itself doesn't eliminate it from being used for any other purpose. Can you play games on that field? No. Were you playing games on that field for the last, I'll call it 10 years or more? No. Uh, so, you know, to say that putting that pitch on that field is taking away the use from other, uh, programs, I think is not the correct.
Uh, I will say that I know that, uh, the Rebels have used it for practice, uh, as recently. Uh, I will say that I know that the Rebels have used it for practice as recently as last year. I know like football has been played there in the past, as my son was part of the program that played there. And I know that as a resident of the neighborhood, I know that the Blue Soccer, when COVID prevented them from using Leader Field, they were using that field regularly for soccer purposes. Uh, and obviously, keeping in mind the kids within the neighborhood as well and, you know, the games that they play in that, uh, on that field. And there are people that play full-field games in the neighborhood on the field. So that's, that's my concern with that.
And I, and I, and I think they'll still be able to continue to use the field. And I still think that teams will still be able to practice there. We have, we have turf and grass at Hillview. We have turf and grass at Lincoln. We have turf and grass at Oakwood.
Beckton?
We have no turf at Beckton.
No, but you have grass.
But all those fields are used by multiple sports, whether it's lacrosse, whether, or it's available to be used for multiple sports, whether it's lacrosse, soccer, softball, baseball, whatever. You know, we had a, we had a community of people that came to, uh, to the borough, our recreation. They, they were looking for a place to play. It's, it's, we, we looked at it as, as an opportunity to provide residents of town, uh, something that they can enjoy, that they would use and that they could, they could teach and maybe even potentially become a, a program that grows within the borough. We've spent millions and millions of dollars on football, on soccer, on lacrosse. We're spending less than fifty thousand dollars on cricket. So, you know, it's an opportunity to, again, I think, and I'm looking forward to it. I really am. I'm looking forward to going and watching them play. I'm looking forward to learning the sport. Uh, I've met some great people in their club. They've, they've created this club from scratch. They've tried to follow some footprints of what the soccer club has done, um, creating that successful club. They're very respectful people and, and, uh, program. And, and I think they're going to be adding a lot of trends back to the community. So, um, you know, my opinion, I think it's a good project. I don't think we're spending enough, a, a lot of money on it. That's going to, you know, again, to, to put that, to turf that entire field, you know, without being able to put lights on it, spending many hours just wouldn't be, you know, a decision that I would support.
I, I completely understand. And I, and as, uh, I'm sure we can continue this conversation a long time, but, uh, I, I, as I said, not against the cricket pitch at all. I'm just asking, uh, to also check in with like those towns like Persipney and Troy Hills, who people have said, and I've talked to them, they're like, the fields get destroyed. It, it really does not allow for multipurpose. And then, you know, just to look into the Milburn project where it is infused within a larger, uh, you know, complex where the, there are alternatives in, instead of using a neighborhood field that is used by people within the neighborhood regularly.
We can have our committee activities, talk to Milburn.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll just add this too as well, right? So just to be, to be clear, this isn't a official cricket pitch. Okay? So we're, we're not having, you know, six, eight-hour cricket games, you know, going on there. The, the idea behind this cricket pitch is an introduction to, uh, a, a, a place for the cricket team and the program to, to be able to pitch the ball and, you know, swing the bats and learn the game. And yes, they'll have some, you know, games, et cetera, but they're not going to be, it's, again, it's not an official-sized pitch where you will see teams coming from, you know, all over to, to compete in New Providence.
Oh, we understand.
Can I ask a question tonight? How, how officially for lacrosse practices? I know you mentioned there are several. Are they scheduled on a regular basis for certain teams?
We've used it as a central field and as the person that does the scheduling and having to deal with fields, it's extremely difficult.
I can relate. Doing it for ten years with the soccer club and Kathleen doing it prior to me, Warner was always that field that it can rain for hours and, and days and it would always be usable for a last-minute practice or if other fields are closed. So I never thought that Warner was an active field other than, as you said, for neighborhoods.
I know that, uh, I believe New Providence Lacrosse is planning on using it as well this spring.
Okay.
Uh, so again, the, the idea of keeping it multipurpose.
As I got off the soccer club and scheduling, Warner was a forgotten field. We didn't use it for any official practices or games anymore just because there were so many better alternatives around the times.
I mean, we used to play men's softball up there and they don't do that anymore either.
But I agree with your point about, I have the very similar opinion about turfing all or none approach, I think. But cost, cost is a huge factor.
And just keep in mind too, right? So all programs have the exact same ability to, rent their, I don't know if that's the right word, but block out the fields for usage for practices, right? And, and what we do with the recreation and the clubs, every club, whenever we're going to turf something, is to make sure that what's going in there is going to be safe for anyone, right? And if, if our engineers say that they're going to put turf in there in a section and you can't play another sport because someone will get injured, we wouldn't do it, right? So, um, that's part of the, you know, rules that we gave them, if you will, that it had to be multipurpose use, uh, so that it wasn't just one, you know, where once you put this in, only one, you know, club can use it. All clubs have access to it. All clubs, it's the same procedure for every field in town. Contact the recreation department, give them your schedule and then they figure it out.
I understand. And I, I appreciate what you're saying. Uh, but a ten by seventy-five foot section of turf does create a bit of an issue for the usage of the full field. So, but thank you for your time, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
And congratulations, by the way. State champ.
Oh, nice. Anyone else wishing to address council? You have a boy scout back there. Did you learn a lot today?
Yeah.
You have any questions for us? Okay. Great. Okay. I declared the public comments closed. I need a motion for items one through fifteen, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I. Mr. Desarno. Mr. Minsky?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Yeah, so good. Thank you all and have a good evening. Thank you for coming.